There are three points we'd like to make in this brief presentation tonight, explaining our reasoning for both putting this article on the warrant in the first place and now moving to withdraw it. The three points are, first, yes, there's still a problem. Second, there was a mandate from the voters. And third, we are responding to it. First, yes, there's still a problem. Briefly recap some things that some of you may have remembered seeing in January. We told you then we had a town policy on class size. We told you that enrollment had gone up 42 percent in the last 10 years. And that the reopening of the Miriam School in 1993 only added 17 percent to our available We told you that our class sizes had gotten up to 24 to 27. And that in grades one to three, our compliance with the town policy on space adopted 10 years ago was now zero. That our compliance in grades four through six was low and getting lower. We told you that we expected at least 100 additional students by the year 2001, possibly many more. Here I have a couple of news flashes, though, to add to the news that we gave you in January. The enrollment is going up even faster than we predicted. Indeed, since January, there are 19 more students enrolled in our elementary schools in this school year. Or to give you another example, at the time of the earlier town meeting, the special town meeting, we did not yet have the birth date for Acton in 1996. We have it now. We had predicted that in 1996, there would be 227 births in Acton. Instead, there were 276. 227 versus 276. We told you in January that when we did our enrollment study, we were deliberately very conservative. We had been conservative because there had been some enrollment studies done in the past, that it aired high. We wanted to be sure that our credibility was reestablished by, if anything, being on the low side. We're definitely proving that our estimates are clearly emerging as having been on the low side. That underscores our conclusion that future compliance with the town policy on space is going to be nearly zero or zero. And now let's talk about the space squeeze again. Here are the main points, or just note, as we contrasted the way space was used over the years, that we had 91 classrooms available for regular classes, grades one through six and 69, and 30 years later, that number has shrunk to 86, even though we have six more classroom spaces available in the system. This brought us to the conclusion that we have a room squeeze, as well as the overcrowding, and that's with using some modular classrooms, with renting two classrooms, and without having real classrooms for a number of other subjects that you could make a worthwhile case should be in classrooms. And that includes computers, projects, and activities that are now being held in halls and storage closets, and we gave some vivid illustrations of that in January. None of that has changed. And that leads us to the summary. Too many children, 50 percent more by the year 2001, squeezed into too little space. Now let me go off the charts for just a moment. I heard a story yesterday. I have a good friend who works at an elementary school in a neighboring town. It's a true story. Yes, last night, when I came home from town meeting, I heard this story. The principal of that school in this neighboring town came into my friend and said, "What's going on in your town of Acton?" She said, "I don't know what you mean." She says, "I've had three families this week come in to look at our school, saying the schools in Acton are going to hell." Now, you'll excuse my language. I'm just quoting what the man said, and he, that principal is not known for being a tactful person. Now, of course, one way is saying, you know, people can say, "Good riddance to them, disloyal Actonians." Or a point can be made as, "Small number of people, not to worry." To me, this was kind of an ominous story. And one reason to me this was an ominous story is forget the absolute numbers. I'll argue to you, now I'm speaking for myself personally, not for the school committee, that our elementary schools are cruising in part on their reputation of the past. That folks don't realize yet just how frayed and stretched those schools are. But this story tells me the reputation's eroding.
(Inaudible)
And when the reputation erodes, people are going to notice that you're just coasting. And that doesn't just mean for real estate. That means for teacher recruitment, when you're asking teachers to work for the same money, teaching 25 percent more students than is the situation in all the competing school districts, and a lot of other things that builds one of those negative cycles. And it's a cycle I don't think this town's going to be happy with once they see it end. So, first point I wanted to make, we still have a big problem. Second, the mandate from the polls. We had a proposal for the problem. The proposal received a two-thirds vote at this town meeting. But unfortunately, it failed at the polls by a margin of 31 votes out of nearly 3,600 cast. Now, to us, there is a mandate in this. Now, we had trouble figuring out what the mandate was. Nancy Banks actually came to the meeting, she had listed the 11 reasons for failure that she had quickly heard and inventoried after that. We didn't think that a vote that was decided by about three-quarters of 1 percent of the electorate was a convincing mandate for the opposition. But I'll confess, if we had won that vote by 30 votes, it wouldn't have been such a terrific mandate for the schools either. And we needed a mandate because it wasn't going to be the last time we were going to go into the well. Because you build schools, then you got to hire teachers to fund them, and there are costs associated with that. So 30 votes either way, not a mandate either side. No matter how it had turned out, if the margin was that close, no side could crow. So the real message to us is that we have a town that's split just about right down the middle. And we need, and that's the mandate, we need to overcome that split. We need to find a way to bring a solid majority of the town together by a plan that commands strong support. That's clear. Because you can't sustain schools and school expansion in a town that's split right down the middle. To get that solid majority, we concluded we need a creative, new approach to the school expansion issue. So that we can win durable majority support in our town. Third point, then, our response to this message. Our response had several parts. First, we decided not to go back to the town again with the same proposal. Now, we took that idea seriously. A number of parents came to us and argued urgently, "Look, a lot of people didn't vote. Go at it again. Look at all these other towns, and there are a lot of other towns. They go at it one, two, three times till they get it passed. Just take another run at it. Try again, and maybe this time we'll get our vote out a little bit better. The community's energized. You'll win." We chose not to follow that path. The reason we chose not to follow that path is because we thought that we should respect the democratic mandate that we had received at the town of Acton that the town was split, that there wasn't majority in favor, and if we went back to the town and said, "We're going to take another run at you," people would feel we had not respected the democratic process. So we won't come back again with the same proposal. Second response, we do still think we need some new building. We held this article on the warrant to hold open that possibility while we worked to come up with a plan that could creatively utilize the new building. Because frankly, within that space, that squeezed space, we couldn't invent new space without some significant new construction. So we still thought and still think that we'll need some new construction that's significant. But third, our response was, we will need to address with this new space not just elementary needs, but also regional needs. And the school committee voted that and agreed that that was true, and that that had to be part of the new message to the town, part of a new proposal. Elementary and regional needs both addressed in new building. And then fourth, that we need to offer a broad perspective on future building needs. A broad perspective on future building needs. There were a lot of ideas as to how we could go forward, and frankly, we concluded that the ideas, some of them seemed to have a lot of merit, but that we were just not ready. The ideas involved some pretty radical suggestions, some suggestions out of the envelope, maybe about moving certain kinds of classes from one building where they're housed now to another building. Suggestions that we'd want to consult about with the affected parents. There are a lot of ideas that we need to think through. We just weren't ready to present a complete, truly innovative proposal to the town at this town meeting and survive the scrutiny we would expect and deserve to receive from you voters. That's why we moved today to withdraw this article from the warrant. But the message is that we are going forward, and we're going forward committed to some creative thinking. And as examples of that creative thinking, notice that we are already reexamining the regional agreement with Foxborough, an essential precondition to a regional perspective from the perspective of many citizens of this town. Reexamining that regional agreement, Part One, we have already acted to change the voting proportions in the regional school committee to accurately reflect the relative populations of the towns, which has the effect of significantly diminishing Foxborough's proportion and significantly enhancing Acton's proportion in the voting in the regional school committee. You'll have that article that's on this warrant for your approval. Reexamining the regional agreement, Part Two, reevaluating monetary contributions from the two towns. A committee to do that, it's a touchy issue, but that committee's already set up, already scheduled to meet, and we're going to be working on that as well. We've already reconstituted the building committee for next year with chairmanship of Lee Stuntz, looking forward again to try to think of ideas that will allow us to respond to the mandate we did hear from the town. That's therefore the reason why tonight, we ask that you agree with us that we withdraw Article Nine from the warrant and accept this motion, but that we hope you'll stay committed to the future of our schools and be prepared for the kinds of ideas we hope to propose to you in the months to come. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.[733.82][733.82](Applause)
Mr. Hunter.
Dr. Hunter, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. And I was the Board of Selectmen's representative to the building committee. And I'm also on that committee you just spoke about, about the financial arrangements and the regional agreement. The Board of Selectmen supports the school committee's motion to take no action on the article tonight. Looking back on my six years on the school committee and having worked with the school committee this last year, I understand their angst at what happened and their difficulty in dealing with the problem. And they were certainly wise, I think, to put Article Nine on the warrant with the selectmen's consent, indeed. It was late, it was sort of a special circumstance, to keep their options open. But I also admire their courageous decision not to go forward at this point. Speaking as filled it personally for a moment, I've been counsel to a government agency for a number of years, and then in private law practice for a number of years. And my consistent advice to my clients has always been, if you can avoid procedural issues, do so. Don't fight over procedure, because procedure can always be gotten around. Get to the substance of the matter. And if the school committee had pressed forward, as some citizens were urging them with Article Nine again, there would have been procedural issues in regard to coming back with essentially the same proposal in a very short timeline. With all the best intentions, a couple of years ago, as you'll remember, we did that on an operating override and had a double failure, which made it very difficult to look forward to those sorts of elections in the future in that category, and I'm afraid the same thing might have happened here. I know the school committee is going to work hard, and we'll be back shortly. We, the selectmen, are already planning for a town meeting, special town meeting, in September, which was necessitated entirely independent from the school situation as a result of problems with the sewer project. And I rather anticipate that the school committee will have something for you then, or at least I'm sure they hope to. So this issue isn't going to go away, and we appreciate their action and not pressing forward at this time. Thank you.
Does the Finance Committee wish to make a comment?
Yes, the Finance Committee extremely sympathetic with the situation that the school board has faced, although we had voted twice to support the construction of the primary school. We are encouraged with the comments regarding innovativeness being applied going forward and a solution that will deal with both primary and the secondary school system and the overcrowding across the board. Innovative solutions is clearly the mandate that I think is being sought, and we look forward to the fall town meeting with new solutions being proposed.
I recognize now the lady at the front microphone who's been patiently waiting.
Hi, my name is Martha Bethel. I live on Lothrup Road. And it is my view, which I know is shared by many other citizens, that we need to act now to address the escalating class sizes and overcrowding in all of Acton's elementary schools and the deteriorating unsafe conditions at McCarthy Town School. I recognize that there is a need for a more comprehensive K through 12 plan. However, any plan that will have the construction, any plan will have the construction of a new elementary school as a building block. Immediate steps need to be taken. We're very concerned, and we really urge the school committee to work quickly to develop a comprehensive solution to be presented to the town in the fall. We urge the town to consider the priority needs of the school as they vote on present warrant articles at this town meeting. Thank you.[968.87][968.87](Applause)
Is there any other comment? Seeing no one standing, we'll vote on the motion to take no action under Article Nine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no. Motion carries unanimously. We'll move to Article 10, which is, deals with smoking restrictions. And the motion under Article 10 is, Ms. Hodling moves in the words of the article, except that the effective date indicated in paragraph B1 shall be revised to read September 30, 1998. Do we hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I think we're going to have a presentation, I believe.[1012.00][1012.00](Music) I've always wondered how we lived without view graphs for so many years. Strange, isn't it? 200 years, no view graphs, the town survived.
You'll have to bear with me. I'm Tina Grisowski. I live at 15 Cone Street, and I have laryngitis, and I've had it for a couple of days. So I'm going to only talk for a few minutes. I started the petition to get this article on the warrant last year. And I'm going to start our presentation with asking you to remember Ross Lilly's invocation last night to open town meeting with the idea that we're asking you to bring your hearts and your minds to the idea about caring for this community. It seemed last night to me that there are a lot of themes in the articles and in the conversations that we had last night about all of us working to care for this community, caring for the things we already have, the properties, the schools, and ourselves, and trying to move that forward. This bylaw is in that spirit of trying to make this community a healthy, happy, active place for us all to live. And this bylaw is, we brought it forward to ensure that we promote and protect our public health in Acton. And in that spirit, as you listen to our presentation and to the other people who are going to speak for the article, I am going to hold the position for myself, and I ask you to join me in that there's people who don't, who are not wanting to have this bylaw passed. And specifically, there are a couple of restaurant owners who are afraid of loss of business because of this bylaw. And I want to take their fears seriously, because I want them to know that we care about their business, because that's important to them. So I'm going to ask you to join us in the idea that we need to get rid of secondhand smoke in the restaurants in Acton. And we need to tell them that we're going to come to their restaurants and eat there and help their businesses to stay, to stay where they are, or even to grow. So I want you to understand that we are pointing forth the idea in this bylaw that we want to acknowledge them in this town as well, and that we care about, care about them as well, with the idea that we want to get rid of secondhand smoke and make the restaurants a good, healthy place for us in Acton. So I'm going to let Win speak.[1225.33][1225.33](Music)
Hi, my name is Win Hodling, 12 Tuttle Drive in Acton. And I want to thank everybody who has come down here tonight, and also all the people who have worked very hard with us on this article and supported us. As you might know, secondhand smoke is an issue which has only really become known to the public in the past few years. Everybody knew for years that smoking was hazardous to your health, but I think that the documentation had started to trickle in and certainly is now starting to come in in a flood, that it is way more serious than anybody had ever acknowledged before. I have a couple of view graphs. You know, the people that are suffering and dying have a voice, and we would like to help them with their voice. We had a public hearing on this issue on March 9. And during our public hearing, there were a couple of restaurants who came forward and opposed our bylaw, and they will be proposing a countermeasure. Our bylaw, as it was read, is that we're hoping for 100 percent smoke-free restaurants in Acton, with the exception of restaurants that have bars and lounges, would be able to have 25 percent seating as long as they provide its separate ventilation. There have been a wide range of costs of the ventilation, anywhere from $15,000 to over $100,000. I don't know what the number is. I think it's on the lower end rather than the higher end. But to that, they decided that they would propose a counterarticle, and that may come to the floor tonight. We had listened to their position, we had thought about it very seriously, and some of the things that they had asked us to amend, we felt were not within the spirit of our intention. They've asked us about grandfathering in existing restaurants. They've asked us about phasing in the 100 percent seating over a period of years. They've also asked about allowing certain hours for smoking in the restaurant and other hours to become non-smoking. They also said that they thought that the implementation date was too soon. We were shooting for July 1. We did take that into consideration, and we have pushed it back to September 30. And that was read by the moderator as our own amendment to our own article. One of the things that I think you want to know is that we moved it back to September 30 to coincide with the city of Boston, which has passed a law that they're going to go entirely smoke-free by September 30. And we also just found out last night that the city of Portland, Maine, is going smoke-free within 120 days. So the timeline is not severe. The timeline, I think, is reasonable. And of course, the Board of Health has variances, and so if a restaurant on a case-by-case basis had an implementation program, and they needed a little bit more time for the construction, I'm sure that they could go to the Board of Health and get a variance based on timeline. One of the things that always concerns me is that people's civil liberties are going to be infringed upon if they're not allowed to smoke freely wherever they want to. But I say, whose civil liberties are more important? Whose should be considered? Is it a small group of people who want to smoke freely, or is it a majority of people who don't smoke and don't want to be exposed to secondhand smoke? You have freedom of speech, but you're not allowed to yell fire in a crowded theater. You can have a parade, but you have to have a permit. You can drink alcohol, but if you're serving alcohol in a restaurant, you have to have a license. In fact, this society has a lot of restrictions and regulations that we all have to live by and abide by. And some important ones involve public health. And this is another one of those. One of the other arguments that we hear is, why don't we wait till the whole state goes smoke-free? I happen to have been a smoking cessation coordinator in a Department of Public Health grantee for a number of years with the state, and I know that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is not planning on going for a statewide law to prevent smoking across the state. They have chosen to take your 25 cent tax, and they are going city in town by city in town, passing these ordinances, bylaws, whatever. And Acton is the last one in a group of towns around us who don't have smoking restrictions that include 100 percent smoke-free, with the exception of ventilated areas. All the towns around us, the one town that is near us that doesn't have smoking regulations is Carlisle, they have no restaurants. So we have basically a horseshoe effect of all the towns around us already smoke-free. Town of Harvard has basically two restaurants, their pizza shop, one has smoking, one doesn't. Maynard and Stowe have not enacted regulations yet. I have spoken to the Board of Health of those towns. They are planning on enacting regulations, and they're waiting to see what Acton's going to do. But I do know that where Acton has voluntarily, of the 36, 37 restaurants, over, about 50, 53 percent are already smoke-free by choice. In Maynard, who you could consider a competition, they've already got 75 percent of the restaurants smoke-free by choice. So I really think that Acton, it's time to join Boston and the big league and not be the sticking-out-like-a-sawthrum, last town to go smoke-free, you know, for what reason? Whoops, sorry. I'm very new at this view graph thing. People ask me to talk about health effects, causes of death, preventable causes of death. You know, we start with number one, smoking. Persons who do smoke themselves. Number two, consumption of alcohol. Number three, passive smoking. There are, in fact, about 53,000 deaths per year attributable directly to secondhand smoke. That is, people who die because somebody else was smoking near them. This same view in a, wrong way. An unknown factor, people always think, well, am I going to get lung cancer because my spouse is smoking, or because I'm exposed to smoking in a room? Yes, to some extent, you may. But heart disease is actually the larger number of killers. And it's such an insidious thing. You may not have a symptom. You may not even know that the smoking was the thing that caused you to drop dead and die of a heart attack. But statisticians, public health officials who have been tracking this for years and years, they find when the person had no other predisposing factors, except the fact that they were being exposed to secondhand smoke on a regular basis, they have a very high incidence of heart disease and death. Finish up with, you know, we've been given the message that public health is less than economics, you know, in some of the hearings that we had. I don't think that's the case. I think that, as Tina said, going smoke-free in a town does not necessarily represent doom and gloom situation. In many towns, the restaurants have found that they have actually gained customers. They, the people who have been avoiding going to certain restaurants will probably go to those restaurants if the environment was less hazardous. And you and I know that you've been to a restaurant, and you've been seated in the non-smoking section, and you know that the smoke filter's over, and you know that occasionally you've had a meal ruined. You don't necessarily go up to the manager and say, you know, "I'm sorry, but the person in the next table was smoking, and it ruined my meal." You just don't go back there. They don't know how many people they've lost. You know, I'm concerned about the restaurants losing business, but I'm also thinking they're going to gain some business. I think that having a reputation of being an excellent restaurant and being a smoke-free restaurant is a real draw, especially around here where most of the towns have already gone smoke-free. Finally, I'd like to mention the Persons with Disabilities Act. It does not strictly apply to private, you know, restaurants, but they are public places. And you know that if you had a wheelchair and you couldn't get into the place because it had steps, you wouldn't go there. If you have asthma, bad allergies, or you are simply really, really annoyed and irritated by smoke, you don't go there. I think a person with an asthma problem has a disability, and I think that that person is being precluded from going to restaurants of their choice. And I would like to see some of our fine eating establishments be wide open to anybody and everybody who would like to enjoy them. Wrong way. My final slide is this. Secondhand smoke, we didn't know that it was dangerous, but, you know, we know it is now. And I don't think the town of Acton should ignore it. If Boston can go, if Portland can go, if the rest of the towns around us can go, I don't see any reason why Acton can't go smoke-free 100 percent. Thank you.[1794.95][1794.95](Applause)
Comments?
Comments from the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Fredericks?
The Board of Selectmen do not recommend this article.
From the Finance Committee?
The FinCom took no position on this and decided it was a political decision as opposed to an economic decision.
Okay. I'm sorry, sir. Did you mean to speak as well?
Yes, sir, if that's possible.
Go right ahead.
Thank you.
Are you a registered voter?
Beg your pardon?
I just asked if you were a registered voter. I was teasing.
Wait, wait, wait.
Go right ahead. Have you got your card?
Just a color design.
Thank you. That's the color for the night. Go right ahead.
Is this key lime or regular lime? Oh, okay. Never mind.
Are you asking me? It's not key lime, but it's close.
Well, it's the key to get in, so...
Okay, perfect.
Sorry, sorry.
I'm glad you said that and not me, though.
It won't be the last one either, no, I'm...
Yeah, you're probably right.
Hi, good evening. I'm Bill McGinnis from the Board of Health. When citizens put forward this petition, the Board of Health was asked to review it and make a recommendation as to whether we supported it or not. We held a public hearing, as Wyn mentioned, and after the public hearing, I'll take all the drama out of my presentation, I'll tell you right up front, we supported it unanimously. And I'd point out that I'd underline the word unanimously. When you can get five people to all nod their heads at the same time in a town board, you're doing pretty good, so obviously that was pretty strong support. And we made this decision after hearing comments at a public hearing. And I'd like to just go over some of the areas that the public hearing touched on and how we viewed them. It might help explain how we came to our conclusion. The areas, the comments at the public hearing came out basically in three groups. There was comments on the health effects of secondhand smoke, impacts on what I'll call freedom of choice, and then the economic impact to the restaurant owners. The next slide talks about the health effects. I won't belabor this, but as you've heard Wyn say, secondhand smoke has been classified by the EPA as a Class A carcinogen. And that may or may not mean a lot to you, but just give you an example, asbestos is another Class A carcinogen. And a number of years ago, about 10 years ago, I believe there was some asbestos ceiling tile found in one of the Acton schools. Now, it turns out, under the state rules, you don't actually have to remove that because as long as the ceiling tile's not crumbling, it really doesn't release the asbestos to the air and you're really not impacting anyone's health. However, you know, as a parent, who would like to see asbestos remain in the Acton schools? Who would like to see the asbestos gotten out of there? I sure did. And I can please to report, the Acton schools did what I would hope they would. They got it out of there immediately. Okay? That's a Class A carcinogen. It doesn't mean it'll cause you harm today, but it's not something that you really want to fool with. So, just say, I promised I wouldn't belabor the point. I just point out that at the public hearing, no one disputed the health effects of secondhand smoke. Why don't we move on? Okay, there was some discussion about freedom of choice. And I'd like to just address one thing. There was a letter written by the Acton Area Chamber of Commerce to the Board of Selectmen opposing this bylaw. And I think perhaps the discussion needs to be refocused a little bit. In their letter, just reading it to you, they said, "If these restaurants are forced to ban smokers from their premises, a portion of their business will go elsewhere. We would be denying a group of people the right to eat out in their own town." No, we're not. People who smoke are welcome to come to Acton restaurants. All we're asking is that you refrain from smoking while you're there. Okay? It would take about as long as this town meeting has taken so far, we ask the people to refrain from smoking. If there are smokers in the audience, they've already restrained, refrained from smoking for that long. I believe they could reasonably, they could reasonably do that in a restaurant. Just to make sure I wasn't missing anything, I asked my friends who smoke, and yes, Board of Health members do have friends and that smoke. And I asked them, you know, how they go about choosing a restaurant and much as I would expect, they didn't say, "Oh, that restaurant looks like a really good place to smoke and I bet I could get something to eat there." I mean, of course, they go to a restaurant for the food and the ambiance, as much as everyone else does, and, you know, the smoking is incidental. And at least the folks I asked said, yes, they could refrain from smoking for the time it would take for them to enjoy their meal. So please, it's not, we're not banning smokers from Acton restaurants. They're certainly welcome to come. We're just asking that they refrain from smoking. And as Wyn pointed out, in this bylaw, there is provisions for restaurants to retain a smoking section. It just needs to be separately ventilated. So if the smokers really need to be accommodated in the restaurant, the business owners have the choice to do that. Oops, excuse me, I got a little hit on myself here. Okay, I guess in terms of a freedom of choice perspective, it does give everyone the choice to go to the restaurant. That's one of the key points. Some people at the public hearing made a comment that basically it summarized as, if you don't like the fact that the restaurant has smoking, don't go in. And that this will, through free market forces, have the business owner decide whether or not they wish to go smoke-free based on their patrons. I kind of found that interesting. Recently, Boards of Health celebrated their 100th anniversary about two years ago. The legislation which created Boards of Health is about 100 years old. And so the state, in part of the centennial, shared with Board of Health members some of the original debate that went on in whether or not to establish Boards of Health. Restaurant owners were vehemently opposed to it. But at the time, why people were considering it is that eating out became a life-or-death experience, you know? Sometimes it was okay, sometimes you died. And people realized that maybe that wasn't such a good thing. But the restaurant owners used that exact argument. Well, gee, it should be up to the person to decide whether or not to come to this restaurant. You know, they should decide whether or not they think this restaurant's healthy. If they don't like it, they don't come in. And if enough people come here, get sick, then they'll stop coming here and then the restaurant will be forced to change. Well, 100 years ago, today's conservative would look like a flaming liberal 100 years ago. And yet, even 100 years ago, they realized that that was not a good argument. It wasn't really a civil rights issue, it was a public health issue. People have an expectation to be able to go to the businesses that you work in, you do business with, and not be harmed. You wouldn't want to work in a building that was in danger of falling down. We have building codes. If you were a shipping dock worker, and I can give you an example, at my company, we have a carbon monoxide monitor on the shipping dock. That's because some trucks back in, they leave their engines running, it creates carbon monoxide on the shipping dock to protect the workers. There's a monitor, turns on exhaust fans, sounds an alarm so that, you know, you can go tell the person with the truck to shut it off. Well, we can always tell when someone's sneaking a cigarette out on the smoking dock because, or excuse me, the shipping dock. It's not supposed to be the smoking dock. Because, of course, the carbon monoxide detectors go off. So you point out, you know, no one would say to the people that work on the shipping dock, "I'm sorry, you just got to breathe truck exhaust all day and if you don't like that, go work somewhere else." So it's really not, I mean, the Board doesn't really view this as being a civil rights issue. And I hope maybe you would see it the same way. I mean, all businesses are already heavily regulated. All we're trying to do is get healthy environments in the restaurants. Okay? And last, my last slide, talk a little bit about the economic impact. Now, this is normally not a big concern of the Board of Health, but it's come up and I guess we would like to just address it. The restaurants, one of their biggest fears was that they're going to lose smoking patrons to surrounding towns. Okay? My comment is, to where? As you show Wyn's map, all the surrounding towns are already smoke-free with the exception of Maynard and Stowe, and they're likely to go that way, too. I work often in the town of Bedford, which is 100% smoke-free, and I can tell you, if you try to go out for lunch, you better get there early because the restaurants often fill up, to the point that there's no seats. So there really hasn't been an impact to business, at least that I can tell, in Bedford. I haven't taken a survey, but my own informal survey says that they're not hurting. I don't know of anyone that's gone out of business in Bedford because of it. Also, one of the questions was asked of the Acton restaurant owners, how much business increase did they see when Concord, Littleton, Westford, and so forth went smoke-free? They said they really didn't notice any increase in business. Well, flip that around, right? If they didn't see people fleeing the other towns to come to Acton, probably the same will be true in Acton, that the people won't leave Acton to go elsewhere. The second thing is, as I mentioned before, restaurants can still keep a smoking section under this bylaw. It just needs to be separately ventilated. Now, in the letter from the Acton Chamber of Commerce, they talked about the expense of this ventilation system. So just did the division. It comes out that if you took the entire capital cost that the Acton Chamber of Commerce estimates for a ventilation system, which I think is probably worst case, it comes out to 90 cents a day per seat for the first year. That's absorbing all the capital cost. Every year thereafter, it goes down to 12 cents a day per seat in the restaurant that they cited. So it would seem to me that this is not a crushing financial burden. I mean, most restaurants, I would assume, turn over a seat two, three times a day. I mean, you're looking at, you know, 30 cents the first year, 3 cents the second year per seat, or per patron, rather. If you really need to keep a smoking section because you feel that's what you need to do to maintain your business viability, you know, I guess I don't see that this is a crushing economic hardship. The last thing I just, the last point I want to make, I know, glad to hear that it's the last point, is just sort of to appeal to your sense of fairness and consistency. In Acton, when we look at health decisions, traditionally, they haven't been made solely on economic reasons or economic considerations have been probably fairly far down on the list. I'll give you some examples. Zoning. There've been many zoning articles. Almost every zoning article affects a business or a property owner in some way. It restricts their use of the property, tells them what they can and can't do, how they can expand it, whatever. Many times at town meeting, there've been business owners here pleading not to have a zoning article enforced because it'll prohibit them from expanding their business, it'll prohibit the use they plan for their property, whatever. But yet, you know, the zoning article is a part of the quality-of-life decision in town and town meeting, you know, ways that I'm sure, but usually decides that the quality of life is more important than the economic impact. Another example is groundwater cleanup. At last town meeting, we passed a bylaw determining how clean our groundwater has to be cleaned by companies that have polluted it. We basically said it needs to be about 10 times cleaner than federal standards. And the rationale is, we drink the groundwater. That's what goes, what recharges our wells. And it's fairly logical. I mean, you know, we don't necessarily want to be drinking the remnants of toxic waste and we would like to see that thoroughly cleaned up. Well, the costs are going to be substantial for the businesses involved and they were quite concerned about those costs, yet this town felt that the health of, the quality of the drinking water and the health of the citizens is more important. Another example was adult entertainment. This may not be the best of examples because it certainly doesn't have a very popular constituency, but two years ago, we passed a zoning bylaw which prohibits, effectively prohibits adult entertainment in this town. There was one video store at least that used to rent X-rated tapes. They stopped doing that because they were not supposed to anymore. Surprisingly, the Chamber of Commerce did not write any letters talking about how the X-rated video patrons were now forced to go to other towns to get their X-rated videos, nor was anyone concerned about the impact on business. So I guess I would say if, the logic there seems to me that if we were truly concerned about civil liberties and access to buildings, you know, we wouldn't have voted for this. The reason why we voted for this is obvious. It's a quality-of-life issue. You know, this is not a town necessarily that needs to support adult entertainment. Okay? And I guess that's about it. I just mentioned sidewalks. Sidewalks are something we're trying to encourage in this town because they feel that they could save lives. We're willing to pay the expense for them. Just to close, if you believe the EPA's estimates, banning smoking in Acton restaurants or requiring the separate ventilation will save approximately 10 lives. And so if sidewalks, you know, save, would save a few lives, so would this. This would save lives as well. Thank you very much.
I think now the... Point of information? Yes, go ahead, ma'am. Why don't you come to a microphone because everybody can't hear you?
Robin Talcowski, 169 Main Street. Could the Selectmen say why they did not approve this?
Actually, there were a number of reasons. The first reason is that we thought that eventually the state would move towards no smoking across the board for restaurants. We also looked at it as an economic burden that we really didn't feel that the businesses should take on if the next couple of years are going to bring some major changes. We also did the same analysis as far as choices for people in Acton. And we felt that with the number of non-smoking restaurants, there was adequate choices. There are some of us that are lifetime non-smokers and we're certainly sensitive about people not smoking, but we felt that there was plenty of choice, both for patrons and for employees.
Okay, other comment on this article?
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. I have another comment, too.
Where are we? Yes, well, it's your comment. What is your comment related to...
It's the end of the presentation.
Okay, fine, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you for just bearing with me for one more minute. Last evening, we came here and we actually had two people from out of town who came to support us. One of them was a lawyer from the Tobacco Resource Center in Boston. The other one was a person who's a spokesperson from the American Cancer Society. And because this went into the second night, unfortunately, both of those people were not going to be able to be with us tonight. But the woman from the Cancer Society did send a letter and I'm just going to read a couple of brief excerpts that she covered a couple of points that I think I would like you to hear. "To the citizens of Acton, regrettably, I am unable to join you for the second night of town meeting. However, I would like to express the American Cancer Society's strong support for Article 10, which will amend your restaurant's smoking bylaw. When the original law was passed, it probably was considered to be quite progressive. Today, given what we know about the dangers of environmental tobacco smoke, that bylaw is outdated and does not protect non-smokers from ETS." Let's see. "Restaurants are currently regulated from door to dumpster in order to protect the health and safety of their patrons and employees. Common sense dictates that we would not leave it up to the discretion of the restaurant owners to decide whether or not to wash their dishes at a certain temperature or to serve food that has passed an expiration date or to have inadequate means of egress in case of a fire. Surely, profits would be higher if the public health measures could be treated as optionals. Restaurant smoking is not simply a matter of accommodation for smokers and an economic concern for proprietors. It is a public health threat to all those who share that environment. We must treat secondhand smoke like it is, the first-class killer that it is. The American Cancer Society respectfully urges the voters of Acton to support Article 10 and then to support your local businesses by eating out, eating out often, and breathing freely. Best wishes for your debate. Thank you. Lori J. Fasina, Coordinator of the Grassroots Advocacy of the American Cancer Society."
I'll recognize the gentleman at the front microphone.
Thank you, John Campbell, 1 Monard Avenue. In my frank opinion, this debate really shouldn't have been necessary. The Acton Board of Health, in my opinion, should have acted unilaterally to stop smoking in all public places, as many Boards of Health have. But here we are and act we must because in my, side-stream smoke causes cancer, side-stream smoke causes heart disease and stroke, side-stream smoke causes diabetes, side-stream smoking is linked to asthma and exacerbates asthma. Cigarette smoke is radioactive. If you smoke or have smokers in your home or your restaurant, it's dangerously radioactive and so are your lungs and your breath. And now we have strong evidence, and I'd like to use the view graph, if I may. Now we have strong evidence that cigarette smoking during pregnancy causes conduct disorder, boys that burn their parents' houses down and kill schoolchildren. Because the nicotine messes up their brain development during gestation, they're psychopaths like the boys in Arkansas. Is this what we want? Dunkin' Donuts, McDonald's, and Burger King are smoke-free nationally. Why did they do this? They did this for sound business reasons and this is addressed to the Finance Committee. Now that we are meeting as a town to discuss this, we really cannot turn back. If we vote to continue to allow smoking in public places, how long will it be before a waitress or a waiter sues the town, as well as this restaurateur, for a side-stream smoke-related illness? How long will it take for someone who has an asthma attack in one of our restaurants to sue us? How can we afford this? How long can we allow our citizens to be poisoned by this stuff? I urge you to vote yes on this article. Thank you.
Is there anybody here tonight who wants to speak in opposition to this? Yes, then I'll recognize you two in that order. You first, sir.
Thank you very much. My name is Don Barron. I live at 7 Mallard Road. I'm a new resident in Acton. I moved in last year and we were very pleasantly surprised to find that there were a number of good restaurants in Acton. That wasn't high on our list when we were looking... of good restaurants in Acton that wasn't high on our list when we were looking at the different qualities of housing in the area. We moved here from New York State, and I can tell you from firsthand experience at New York State what that smoking ban, and make no mistake about it, this is a smoking ban we're talking about tonight. Most of the restaurant owners will not install this expensive equipment and keep smoking legal here. First, it went into New York City, and we stopped going out to lunch and having business meetings, and that was just fine so that we could go out in the weekends. I lived up in Westchester County, about thirty miles out of New York, about the same distance as we are from Boston. And then they passed a New York State law with a faceless Board of Health that we couldn't address at that time. And that desperately hurt the restaurant owners, and it seriously affected the quality of life for adults who do smoke. And it is a quality of life issue for those who do smoke. We couldn't go out to eat and enjoy those restaurant times. Sure, we still went to restaurants, just not very often. Recently, Boston, quote, "passed" the law. It didn't. It had a faceless Board of Health managed by the mayor's office and, without any voter recognition, passed a ban. And I went out to lunch today in Boston. There were six of us. We went out for business meeting. Yes, we sat in the smoking section. Yes, I was the only one smoking, and we spent about a hundred dollars. And I can just see what's going to happen to Boston, very similar to New York. They're going to, the number of people going out to eat is going to drop. I guess what's happening here, one of the things I'd like to mention that hasn't been brought up perhaps, is that when I sat through the town meeting last night without smoking for over four hours, there was a lot of discussion about taxes and property taxes and the heavy reliance on property taxes in this town. And it was noted that something like seven or nine percent came from commercial levies. Those are the folks that are giving us our sources of revenue. We need to support them. And this motion tonight takes away significantly an impact on their revenue, that tax stream, and it effectively bans smoking. And I would suggest that we not pass this tonight. Thank you.
Gentlemen at the back.
Actually, just have a question for the gentleman from the Board of Health. Just wondering, is there a law requiring carbon monoxide detection equipment on loading docks in the state of Massachusetts?
I haven't a clue.
And to your knowledge, are employers a hundred percent compliant, all employers?
I wouldn't know. I mean, I only work for one, and that, working for one is enough.
So in effect, it's possible that employers are saying, many employers that are not compliant are saying, if you don't like the fact that there's carbon monoxide on the dock, go ahead and move along, contrary to your presentation?
Oh, no, definitely not. I mean, first of all, there's threshold limit values established by the government. I believe they're enforced by OSHA, but there is certainly a threshold limit value for carbon monoxide. I'm sure the shipping dock, it has to do with the design of the dock. If you have an enclosed dock, which is what we do so that you can unload the trucks without being in the rain, or without bringing the goods you're unloading off the truck through the weather, you probably are much more susceptible to carbon monoxide buildup than if you have a ramp that goes to an open dock. But, I mean, it's certainly a case where, as I mentioned, there is an established threshold limit value for occupational exposure to carbon monoxide, as there is to hundreds of other chemicals, and workers have a right under the SARA law, as well as the OSHA regulations, to be not exposed to greater than those threshold limit values in their occupation.
Thank you. I just wondered if that was regulated or not. Thank you.
Yes, it is.
Is there anyone else here this evening who is going to speak against this article? Okay, then I'll recognize Peter first, since you're standing there. Then the two gentlemen in back, would you?
Peter Ashton, Old Barn Way. I'm speaking here as a private citizen. I recognize this as an emotional issue, and it is partially a motion that brings me to speak to the microphone. Both my parents died of smoking-related diseases, and it's an issue that is near and dear to my heart. But I would like everyone, because I know many people have also been touched by similar tragedies, I would like people to step away from the emotional issue and just consider this from a policy point of view. Because I believe that when one views it from a policy point of view, particularly a public health point of view, you will see that it makes sense to pass this article. The arguments that are made and are to be made by the gentleman behind me, I believe, about lost business in restaurants have been analyzed from a business and economic standpoint. I have with me a couple of such studies that were done by economic consulting organizations which have in fact analyzed the effect of different types of smoking bans that were put into effect, and the impact on restaurants in those towns where such bans were instituted. Studies include studies of Brookline, fifteen cities in California, in Colorado, and another study of Westlake Hills, Texas. Every one of those studies concluded, after a period of analysis of six months to a year, that there was no appreciable or significant decline in the restaurant businesses as a result of the ban. The second point I'd like to address is the fact that there are some added costs, but I think we saw from the Board of Health tonight that those costs are relatively insignificant. To the extent the decision is made to implement those ventilation systems, I suspect we will see that those costs will be passed on in the price that people pay to patronize those restaurants. Finally, there is the third argument, which is, I think frankly, the most difficult argument to deal with, and I think the one that we as a town need to address in our own hearts and minds, and that is the issue as to whether this is too much regulation. You've heard the argument that says that restaurants are already regulated, so why not regulate more? I'm not convinced by that argument. The argument that I am convinced by, however, is the fact that there is a public health need for smoke-free restaurants in this town, and that's why I support this article. Thank you.
I'll now recognize the two gentlemen whom I believe are going to speak against this article.
Jay Bealing, Tall Breezy Point. I represent Crossroads Cafe here in Acton. Before I make my presentation, this is a public relation nightmare for those of us who are in this food service business. We don't mean to alienate anybody who's willing to walk into our restaurants, but this is an issue that's very critical to myself and the people who are in the restaurant business in this town. And I ask for a no vote to this article, to maintain the current policy of seventy-five percent non, twenty-five percent smoking, which still makes Acton a leader in the state where the regulation calls for seventy percent smoking and thirty percent non. At the preliminary hearings that we attended, we were told that this was a health issue, as we've expounded on tonight, and not an economic issue. But for those of us who work in the food service and work under these guidelines, it is very much an economic issue. At a hundred percent non-smoking, there would be a definite loss of business, and that would trickle down to all those, all those of us who work in it, are all involved in the restaurant, those who make their sole living at it, and those who supplement their income. It is true that the majority of my customers are non-smokers, but there still is that segment that do smoke and should be allowed to do so. I cannot personally dispute the facts and figures of professionals about the negatives of secondhand smoke. But from a personal experience, being a lifelong non-smoker, which is ironic because I'm defending it right now, being a lifelong non-smoker, I grew out of my asthmatic condition working at my family's restaurants on a daily basis for years when there was no smoking sections at the time. Every table had an ashtray, and it was up to the individuals whether they wanted to smoke or not. Two years ago, we were at that, we were at the same station at this town meeting discussing this very same nature. And we were fortunate enough to win on a majority of vote to maintain the current policy. After all the information had been presented, much the same way as it has been tonight, the deciding factor, due to an eloquent speech by a concerned citizen, the deciding factor was the freedom of choice issue. Unlike the Health Commission in the city of Boston, our Board of Health, much to their credit, I believe, could have simply mandated this hundred percent non-smoking board, but it allowed the petitioners to bring this forward so as a time we could vote on it again. The restaurants in Acton, even though we serve the public, are private businesses, and I believe that the choice issue was once again a major factor. Due to recent survey, Acton's number of non-smoking seats is eighty-eight percent of the total number of the seating capacity. Granted, we have been told that some of the hundred percent non-smoking restaurants buy some smoking, some non-smoking seats in my restaurant, which is true. I maintain that seventy-five, twenty-five policy. But all that means is those who do have a problem with secondhand smoke and are affected in some way do have other choices. In closing, I would ask that we add a little common sense to this issue, and not look at dining out as being detrimental to your health in any way, but just looking at it as a time to enjoy and maybe relax with a friend or family member, and I would ask for a no vote on this article. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
And now the gentleman at the front microphone. You are not a town resident, sir, I believe?
That's correct. I'm Jack Mendoza. I operate Scupper Jacks.
It's the practice of this town to ask the town if they wish to hear from you. I'll do that now. All in favor of hearing from this gentleman, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Motion is carried. Jack, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Over the past six years, as the owner and operator of Scupper Jacks, I've made many decisions in an effort to improve my business and meet and hopefully exceed the expectations of my customers and the general public. These decisions have included menu changes, pricing strategies, advertising, decor improvements, and what community issues and efforts to support. All of these decisions have involved both a good deal of thought and concern for their outcome. Because I had the freedom of choice, I was able to make decisions that I honestly felt would improve the public's perception of my restaurant and essentially improve my business. Thus, all of these decisions were very important to me, not only because of my concern of how they would be received by you, the public, but also because I had the choice to make these decisions. One of these decisions I reached over the past six years was to substantially reduce the number of smoking seats available at Scupper Jacks. The guideline for me was the present Acton bylaws requiring seventy-five percent non-smoking and as much as twenty-five percent available for the smokers. I have chosen to increase non-smoking areas in my restaurant to eighty-seven percent of the seats available. I feel that this was a good decision and a choice made by me to better serve all of my customers and the public in general. The decision and choice of seventeen citizens in Acton who signed the petition, supported by the Board of Health, to put Article 10 before the law, I feel takes away my ability to run my business in the best interest of all the potential and existing customers I have. Trust me when I say that other restaurants in town, many much smaller than Scupper Jacks, would have far greater negative effects in their business than I will if this warrant is to be passed tonight. The fact that today, in the town of Acton, your thirty-six restaurants offer only two-hundred-and-ninety-four seats, or eleven and a half percent of the two-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-six seats available in all of our businesses, further supports my belief that your restaurants have already made good business and common sense decisions to better serve you when you consider the issue of secondhand smoke. We all make decisions and choices every day of our lives. Many choices obviously need to support the laws of the land, so to speak. Smoking is not illegal in this country. Is smoking good for you? We all know that it isn't. However, some have chosen to ignore the warnings and continue to smoke. We make many decisions each and every day to do affect the health of ourselves, our families, and those of others. I love steaks. Owning a restaurant, I could eat beef twice a day, seven days a week. I choose not to. When my wife and kids and I visit another restaurant, yes, we opt to sit in non-smoking sections. When young people of high school age enter my restaurant and ask to sit in the smoking section, do I ask for IDs to prove to me that they are eighteen years of age? Yes, I do. Thus, they either leave, sit in a non-smoking section, and go home and have their parents call me and complain that I should allow their sixteen-year-old to sit and smoke in my restaurant. I do not agree, and my choice is not to allow it. Do we ask each and every dining guest entering my restaurant if they prefer non-smoking or smoking and allow them to make their choice? Yes, we do. Has anyone, to my knowledge, ever left my restaurant because I have a smoking sanction? Not that I'm aware. But if they did, I would support their choice and their decision. Are potential customers of mine and other restaurant owners in town not coming to certain restaurants because smoking sections are still available? Perhaps they are. But if they have done, would I wish those of you who do support the intent of Article 10 also do here tonight? Do not vote yes to Article 10 by shouting yes or standing to be countered, but vote with your pocketbooks. Choose not to support my restaurant, but do not vote to take away the choice of others. Smoking in and of itself is not good. I couldn't agree more. However, the effects of secondhand smoke, a real health issue in Article 10, on someone visiting my restaurant, sitting in a non-smoking area of the restaurant once a week, twice a month, or four times a year, is something to worry. I do not agree with as a health hazard. If you believe smoke, secondhand smoke, to be an issue, you have many alternatives in this town. We're to spend your hard-earned dollars when you wish to die. Please vote no to Article 10. Thank you.
I'll recognize Dr. Donald.
I had a long speech, but I defer to rational time, and I'll move the question, please.
Do I hear a second?
Yes.
All in favor of cutting off debate, say aye.
Aye.
Those say no?
No.
Debate is cut off? We'll now vote on the motion as read under Article 10. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
Those say no? I think there's three or four people difference. It drives me to tell on what side. Let me try it before we call out the tellers, because sometimes some people's voice is loud and I have to count it as two. So, would all in favor, please stand. Should please be seated. I declare the motion has passed. I don't believe it was that close. I think there were about thirty more people who voted for it. If, however, seven of you doubt my count, you can say it, and we'll have the tellers count it. Hearing none, we'll move on. That's one. Two. Have the tellers come forward. Ready? Okay. All right, we're ready to count the ballots. Would all in favor of the motion, please stand and show your little lime-green cards. All right, we've got all the yes votes. Yes votes. Would all opposed, would all opposed, please stand.
Okay, so that's how it handles it. And you think the vote will be carried? You don't think something-
Oh, yeah, no. Why would they-
Was it one of the factors?
Well, we're using it. It would be an addiction. It would be someone who wants more.
So, you're going to-
I think that's-
Because I want to use it. I want to see if you can do it well.
Okay, the vote, we have the vote. And it was two-hundred-and-fourteen yes, one-hundred-and-thirty-five no. The motion has passed. We'll move to Article 11. Ms. Tavernier moves that the town raise and appropriate one-hundred thousand dollars to be expended by the town manager to study, plan, and implement a watershed-based trading program. Do I hear a second? Been moved and seconded. Ms. Tavernier.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This Article 11 is asking for authorization to fund a program that will begin to clean up the Assabett River watershed by identifying runoff pollution and methods to prevent them from entering the groundwater and surface water in the watershed. To put this proposal into context, I'd first like to give you a brief update of the sewer project that was voted here at last year's town meeting. Our new consultants, Woodard and Kiran, have been hard at work since this past summer. And in spite of numerous bumps in the roads along the way, the project is essentially on schedule and we're moving forward. The twelve-member Sewer Action Committee continues to meet on a regular basis. And we will continue to oversee the project from its conception to its startup time. Just to give you an idea of the phases that we have been in since the summer, the first is the preliminary design phase, which is nearly complete. You have seen field survey and borings being done around town on the piping route and at Adams Street. From that data, they have done numerous engineering calculations and analyses and have determined what the piping routing will be and the treatment options, and have given some preliminary estimates for the cost analysis. We continue to have a public communication and impact planning piece. The Communication Task Force has submitted articles to municipal quarterly, the newspapers. We have handouts. Many of you have picked those up this town meeting. We held a traffic summit today with all of the divisions, local and state, and neighboring towns who will be impacted by construction. And throughout this first phase, we work with DEP constantly, ongoing review of every step of the preliminary design. And this time, we're very pleased to report that we're getting tremendous cooperation from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. At the same time, we are working on the permitting phase of this project. And that has, first of all, determined that hydrogeological studies have been performed on the Adams Street site to determine the capacity for the groundwater discharge at that site. You may have read recent reports that there was a discovery of a highly impermeable soil layer that was found throughout the Adams Street site that very much complicated the design of the groundwater discharge. In fact, it created a real panic among the Sewer Action Committee members because we feared at that point DEP would no longer allow us to discharge into the ground. But we have been assured by DEP that this will not be an insurmountable problem, and they are working with us to do testing that will mitigate that situation. At the same time, we are going through the formal application process for obtaining this permit to discharge into the ground. That includes a MEPO review, which will assess the environmental impact of this proposed sewer project. And as a parallel activity, we are also working with the federal EPA to attempt to get a surface discharge permit, which would take us into the river. This permit has federal jurisdiction. Any discharge in Massachusetts into a surface water supply, like a river, or a lake, or the ocean, is under the federal jurisdiction, whereas the groundwater is under the DEP, the state agency. So, we are working in parallel with both agencies. The project's schedule, this gives you a rough idea of what the benchmarks are. Probably the one that will be most interesting to you is the construction startup, which on here says January, but it'll actually be in the beginning of that construction period, more like April. And it will continue until October 2000, when at that point, we will be starting up the entire system, October 2000. We have some local hurdles to overcome. The first will be the discharge capacity at Adams Street. We are very hopeful that we will at least get the capacity that we felt we would have last year when this was voted, and that's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand gallons per day. That's to sewer the district that is in front of us now, which includes the schools, Kelly's Corner, and parts of South Acton, and discharging on the site at Adams Street. The second hurdle is the increased cost piece that we have recently been given information on. As we've proceeded through the preliminary design, we've determined that the original cost estimates were too low, and that, in fact, they've gone up by about six million. And these cost increases can be attributed to the fact that we are being expected to treat the water at a much higher level than was originally estimated. That increases costs at the plant, and particularly with sledge disposal and so forth. Also, through the soil borings, we've determined that ledge excavation was not estimated by the previous consultants, and that will be about a million dollars. It's really no secret to anybody here how much ledge and outcroppings there are in this town. And of course, that's one of the primary reasons these problem areas have problems, is the ledge is very predominant in those areas. We will need more pump stations than originally thought. And then there was a miscalculation in the linear footage of pipes needed. This was not good news, but really, in any project of this magnitude, it would be unrealistic to think that estimates that came about as a result of a feasibility study at the report level would come that close to the actual final figure. And as we get closer to the end of the final design, some of the contingencies will be reduced, and the final cost may in fact be lower. But the really good news on the cost front is that Acton, the town of Acton, ranks number five and number six on the two-state funding lists. We are there on the top of the list. The only people ahead of us, aside from Cohasset and one list, are the MWRA, and they are always on the top of the list. This is an extremely enviable position, and this guarantees us the zero percent interest loan that we promised last year, which essentially translates into a fifty percent reimbursement to this project. There are many, many communities in this state that would give anything to have our position on that list. Of course, we've been thinking about trying to sell it to them for six million, but then we would sort of defeat the purpose. But anyway, we have been told by DEP that our placement on that list is because of the severe need, environmental need in our community, and the fact that it has been so well documented. And secondly, the quality of the application that was submitted by our consultants was so high that it propelled us up to the top. And of course, we're very pleased with this ranking. We are very optimistic that we will ultimately be given permission from the federal EPA to get into the river. But that's not our first line of attack. We are planning to still discharge into the ground. And so, the final local hurdle will be that we will be having a special town meeting next September. And I would expect that in the next month or two, we'll actually set that date. Because at that time, we need to ask for authorization to spend the final cost amount that will be used by the town to build the system. And we have to meet an October 15th deadline to get the zero percent interest loan. At that meeting, the voters will also determine the capital cost assessment system and the public share of the project, which, as you recall, last year, we voted a one-hundred percent user-funded system. And the public share of the project last year was just the public properties, the schools, and any municipal buildings that were in the first district. But we may wish to revisit that decision. That's always an option on the table. Because some of these increased costs are, in order to build an expansion potential to the plant, to build pipes big enough, to build pump stations big enough, to go beyond the first district. And we feel that we need to revisit that, rather than assume the first district owners will pay for that. So, it will be a very important meeting. I hope you will come. So, that's the current status of the sewer project. And now, let's get on to watershed-based trading program. Acton is part of the Assabett River watershed, which includes all of these abutting communities. It has a population of over a hundred thousand people in this watershed. The definition of watershed-based trading, this is a concept that was created by the Clean Water Act in 1987 and has been established in 1996 by the EPA as a way to trade some benefits to the community with some benefits to the watershed. And what it does is help states address the problem of runoff pollution. Now, I use the term runoff pollution because the actual technical term is non-point source, which just doesn't do it for me. I can't define that. But a point source, the way I define that is you can point to that pipe, and it's dumping pollutants into the river. A non-point source, you can't point to it. It's out there in the watershed. So, I feel if I call it runoff pollution, I think that it's better, easier to understand that. And the EPA is requiring Acton to develop this watershed-based trading program as part of the permit process to get into the river. And frankly, we are, it is a state of the art. It's not something we asked to be the first in the nation, but we will literally be the first municipality in the nation that will do this. They are hoping to use us as a pilot to get all the other plants on the Assabett River to clean up to our standard we're being held to. And they would really like to implement this program across the country. So, my definition of a watershed-based trading is that the EPA will allow us to discharge into the river. In exchange, the town agrees to remove or reduce runoff pollutants from the Assabett River watershed. And that's what this is all about. What are some of the sources of pollution in the watershed? Here are some of the common sources of runoff pollution that you may not think about. Roads, highways, and bridges are sources of significant contributions of pollutants to our waterways. Contaminants from vehicles and activities associated with road and highway construction, snow plowing, sanding, salting, and maintenance. All of those things are washed into the road. Whenever it rains or the snow melts, these pollutants flow down into the drainage system, into the town, and into the watershed constantly. A large amount of this runoff pollution is carried directly into our water bodies. And all of our drainage systems empty out into a water body, whether it's a stream, a tributary, a pond, the river, whatever. The program elements of this request, and this request is for a hundred thousand dollars, there are two parts to it. The first will be the evaluation of the existing environment. And included in that will be before and after testing. If we're expected to be cleaning up the watershed in order to get permission to discharge into the river, we have to prove that we cleaned it up, or that we made some progress. So, we have to first test the existing environment to find out what the parameters are in terms of pollutants. And that will cost about forty-five thousand dollars for water testing beforehand, and then the testing after. after we have implemented a program. The second piece of this is called best management practices, and that's just another fancy word for tools to clean up the watershed, and this will cost $55,000. This is very much a pilot project for the town. This is, we're not going to be able to do this in such an extensive way that the entire Acton watershed will be included, but what we will do with this $55,000 is increase street sweeping immediately, not as the sand is laid down, but much earlier with more sweepers on the streets, so that we can diminish the amount of time those pollutants and the dirt and the debris and the salt are on the street, so that they don't run off. So that will pay for that program. We will also clean the catch basins more frequently, as you've seen the catch basin truck come around maybe once every two years. This will come around more often, because as those pollutants collect in the catch basin, we want to get them out of there before they can again wash into our waterway. And the third part is we will actually do some storm drainage system improvements. We'll put in some special drains that will hold pollutants and runoff in a special filtering system, so that they won't enter again the watershed. And then on top of that, we will actually map out our entire drainage system in the town. We now have GIS capability in our departments, but actually, we don't have a diagram of all of the drainage systems in town, and that's something that we need. All of these best management practices are good ideas for Acton, whether or not we're trying to expand our sewers. And the total of these two steps, as I said, is $100,000. Now this is the ultimate goal in Acton. This is a picture of the streams in Acton, and we want to keep them clean and free from runoff pollutants, to prevent, and certainly, most importantly, to prevent eutrophication. If you remember Ice House Pond before it was reclaimed, town meeting voted funds to reclaim that a few years ago, and we actually had to dig it out, remove all the vegetation that had formed from nutrient loading in that pond and had destroyed it. That project cost almost $100,000. This project would have gone a long way to prevent that decay of that pond. If we can prove that we can withdraw on a daily basis three pounds of phosphorus from the watershed, EPA will give us permission to discharge one pound into the river. Right now, that's the formula we're working on, that's the trading program. We've all kidded around about our ideas of, okay, let's everybody run out and fertilize our lawn really fast, so we can, then we'll test the water, and then stop fertilizing your lawn, and that'll be three pounds. Well, it has to be a little more scientifically done than that. And hopefully, these steps will make some immediate progress. This is the map that shows you the hope piece that we presented last year. Beyond the main district that we have now, which is sort of the grayish, that's the existing district. The colored areas beyond that are the other problem areas in Acton that need to be addressed with sewers, and a river discharge would allow the sewer-ing to be the solution for those areas. So to summarize, the benefits of this article are twofold. One is that we hope with these efforts, EPA will allow Acton to discharge into the river, and that will be if we can actually implement the program and demonstrate that we are cleaning up the watershed, and secondly, Acton citizens will take responsibility to clean up the watershed, and we will all benefit from a cleaner environment, protect our drinking water, and a long-term benefit to all the surface water, ponds, and streams in the town. I hope you will support this.
Comments from the finance committee, please. Mr. Ashton.
The finance committee recommends approval of this article.
Comments from the citizens of the town. Yes.
My name is Eleanor Gentlemen. I'm from Five Lilian Road in Acton, Mass. The question I have about your program, I support it. How are you going to address issues around the borders of Acton, such as issues of non-point runoff from possible developments that are going on in the Acton-Lilton line, like Fort Pond Hill and also Flag Hill? Especially in the case of Fort Pond Hill, this particular development is sited on a very steep hill. This hill drains directly into the headwaters of Fort Pond Brook. If we as Acton people are looking only at our borders, we're going to miss the beginning of Fort Pond Brook, so I'd like to hear what you're proposing to do about that issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for supporting it. This project, as I said, will act as a pilot for the EPA, and what it will do is allow the EPA and DEP to use this as an example of how a regional watershed effort could be created. If you recall, I showed you the watershed map. It doesn't really make sense for just Acton to clean up the watershed when all of those other communities are also adversely affecting it. If we can prove that some of the best management practices that we proposed to do will actually have a dramatic effect on the watershed, they have the ability as an agency to require that for regional, you know, for a whole regional approach on the watershed. And in terms of the particular development that you suggested, yes, that is certainly an environmentally sensitive area. It is literally right on the border of Acton, and for that reason, the Board of Selectmen voted to nominate that project to be reviewed for a regional impact decision by a local planning, regional planning group. But we're being expected to do something new and innovative. Believe me, the agencies will take the data that we generate and apply it to everybody else, and we think that's only fair.
The lady at the back, microphone.
Deborah Seines from Concord Road. I have a couple of questions. One is, pardon me. The one pound of phosphorus, I think you said it is, that would be permitted to discharge into the river. How does that stack up against what the sort of ceiling tolerance is, the I assume it's EPA's? Do you know what I'm asking? Like, is that less? A lot less, up to the ceiling?
Oh, it's a lot less. Nobody actually discharges to that low amount right now. They mostly discharge 10 pounds a day? What do you think?
... comparison of, they are reduced, one part per million, we're doing .1.
Okay. The other plants on the river, is that what you're talking to? The standard is one part per million of phosphorus, and we would be expected to do .1 part per million. So it's a much more stringent standard on us.
Okay, thank you. And my other question is, in the best management practices that you referenced, are there any in there that look at agricultural wastes, pesticide, herbicide, fertilizer, runoffs, that sort of thing?
This proposal was originally 215,000, actually. We reduced it down to 100, because we just felt we wanted to do it in phases, and that's certainly anticipated to be the next phase of a public outreach, coming up with ideas of non-phosphorus ways of landscaping, perhaps putting out a contract to buy products that don't have phosphorus in it and provide them at a lower rate for town residents, and that kind of thing will be the next step. But that's, that's a little more, you know.
And those would be voluntary rather than mandated?
Well, if this works out, we would like to have the agencies help us regulate, rather than just the town creating rules.
Thank you.
Gentleman at the front, microphone.
Steve Olds. Has there been any considerations because of this first-in-the-nation opportunity we have to go for grant monies from other organizations?
Yes, and we did. We applied to EPA for a grant, and we asked for the full 215,000. However, and this was a nationwide competitive grant, and unfortunately, as always happens, the city's got the major bulk of the grant money, and then communities that, and what was the criteria we were told? That economic impact had to be the key criteria, and we didn't meet their criteria. But we are continuing to apply for other grants, and there have been two others recently that have come through. Interestingly enough, DEP now no longer uses economic growth as an issue. They're sticking strictly with environmental problems, but when compared to New Bedford or something like that, ours just didn't hold a candle to it.
I commend you for that effort.
Mr. Katie?
I can just see the headlines. Last in the country to sewer, first in the country to trade.
Clean its watershed, right. Don't surprise us, I believe.
And it's amazing, when I first heard about this, I was, I was actually really excited that something that we had talked about in 1974, is when we first discussed this in the town, is actually coming forth, so it isn't really a first. I was the chairman of the Pollution Subcommittee as part of Project Greentown in the town of Acton, and graduated from university with a degree in natural resource economics, came to the town, and actually mapped the wetlands, doing the aerial photogrammetry work, which are still in the town, all the colored maps we did by hand, and identified the watershed potential and impacts, and had studies that were, we were looking at where were the runoffs, where were the problems, and we were addressing that, because that was, back then, we were talking about sewers. Right? And so, the issue, everybody don't worry about phosphorus for your lawns. You're not, the study's not really going to get impacted, you're not going to have yellow lawns, and nitrogen is an impact, you're going to have a serious impact from nitrogen, but the phosphorus is the one they're looking for. Phosphorus runoff from lawn fertilizer is going to be so negligible to be picked up. The big item is nobody's going to be allowed to wash off their car salt in the winter, and have all that soap runoff go into the streets and collect with the sand. And the salt itself has got a lot of phosphorus in it. Those two areas alone should be able to pick up enough to meet the requirement. And if we just stop, if we ban washing your car in your driveway and allowing that runoff, we should be, that alone, according to UMass, I've talked to people at UMass already, and they said that alone should be enough to meet our requirement for EPA and allow you to get your discharge permits. So we got to be first, let's go for it, and have the headlines.
Thank you very much.
Other comment? Seeing no one standing, we'll vote all in favor of the motion as read. Under Article 11, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Before we move on to the next series of, excuse me, the next series of articles, I'd like to cover an important issue for the town, and that is the town volunteers. As you know, this town has benefited today and in the past from a great number of people who give many hours of their time to help run the town. We normally recognize those people at town meeting, and so on behalf of the town manager, the Board of Selectmen, the Volunteer Coordinating Committee, and a few of the citizens, I would like to thank those people who volunteer, but I would like to read off a list of the committees on which they work. It will just take me a minute to do that, but there's quite a few of them. These are the committees, the major committees in the town. The Acton Boxville Cultural Council, the Board of Appeals, the Board of Assessors, the Board of Health, the Cable Advisory Committee, the Cemetery Commission, the Commission on Disability, the Conservation Commission, Council on Aging, Fair Housing Committee, Finance Committee, Hanscom Field Advisory Commission, Historic District Commission, Historical Commission, Lower Regional Transportation Authority, Metropolitan Advisory Planning Council, Minuteman Home Care, Minuteman Vocational School Committee, Personnel Board, Planning Board, Prison Advisory Committee, Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee, Recreation Commission, Second Airport Fort Devon's Reuse Task Force, South Acton Revitalization Committee, Town Report Committee, Transportation Advisory Board, and last, the Volunteer Coordinating Committee. I also should add, I got a letter from a lady this week, Donna Miller, at 84 Windsor Avenue, and said this was nice to recognize volunteers, but all these years, I'd been forgetting to recognize the many school volunteers that we have, and she's absolutely right. I do not know how many school volunteers you have, but I bet it's hundreds, and so it matches probably all the volunteers that we have in all the other activities. So I would ask all volunteers in the town to stand now and be recognized by their fellow citizens, and elected, we'll call them volunteers, even though they do get princely sums of money. That includes you, O'Brien, you're getting more than I am. Would all volunteers, please stand. Thank you. I would also comment before we move on, that one of the recommendations that the League of Women Voters made was that we have a deputy moderator, in case I'm ill or some other tragedy befuddles me, like my travel schedule. And Dick O'Brien, who's the moderator of the Water District, has agreed to serve that function should it ever be needed. He's eminently qualified, he's been the moderator several times for the Water District. I had one criteria, of course, that he would never run against me for this job, and he has agreed to that, although he may have crossed his fingers. But I think it's a good idea to do that, and I again want to thank the League for that recommendation, it's a darn good one. And Dick, thank you as well for your volunteering. Maybe in the year 2011 or something, we may have to call upon you, if the town's foolish enough to keep electing me. In any regard, enough of that, and thank you to the volunteers, and thank you for Volunteer Coordinating Committee for putting this information together for us. Article 12 has been passed by consent, Article 13 has been passed by consent, Article 14 has been passed by consent. We will move on to Article 15, dealing with the Nezwick Enterprise Budget. The motion in Article 15 reads, Mr. Mullin moves that the town raise and appropriate $1,888,549 for the purpose of solid waste disposal, and to raise such amount, $1,213,549 be transferred from the Nezwick Enterprise Fund, and $667,000 be raised and appropriated. Do I hear a second?
Second, aye.
Mr. Mullin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's quite a glorious job we have here. We had sludge in the previous article, and we have trash in this one, and actually, I'm quite pleased about the watershed trading. I'm glad we're about ready to operationalize, oh. I've already lost one vote, I'm sorry. Get that thing going, so. Anyway, we're going to talk about the Nezwick night, and this is fairly standard, so we're going to go right through it very quickly. As you can see, these are the revenues that we have that come from stickers of 330,000. You can see the numbers. The major thing is the $667,000 tax contribution. And this is how it is spent. As you can see, the greatest amount is on disposal, and that amount is going up. In terms of the Nezwick Enterprise Fund revenue, you can see in this chart is that the revenues are accelerating, and I will show you some sources of that. One source of revenues is the sticker fees, and we've made a pledge over the last several years to try to keep the sticker fees and the tax contribution at a steady rate, and so you can see for this year, it's going to be the same level as it was last year and the last six years. If you inflation adjust those, it's a declining amount, so this is just in constant dollars. The tax subsidy has stayed the same for the last three years. It peaked in 93, 94, and we've kept it at the $667,000 level. And just to show in terms of constant dollars, it's declining modestly based upon a inflationary net present value of dollars. The major story here is the total cost of waste disposal is going up, and I'll just show you, this just shows the total cost as we're in 1997, and it's going up because most of the debt is back-end funded. This shows the cost of the waste disposal, and it breaks it down, and the sources of the, for funding that chart I just showed. Just pause a moment here to absorb this. We've got taxes down here, the stickers are the same. We've got taxes down here, the stickers are the same, so we're seeing that we're projecting out for now until almost the end of the contract to keep the stickers and the taxes the same. The brokerage program, which is an extraordinary clever usage of our resources, essentially developed a spot market in trash under the leadership of Dick Howe, who is retired, and now is on, Dave Brown is working with that program along with Dick on a part-time basis. But that has allowed us to get some revenue coming in. The rest is interest and fund balance. We've built up a fairly substantial fund balance in there, and to the tune of somewhere around 1.8 million. Now we're starting to tap into that fund balance to let, make sure to keep these payments low, or keep them at the same level, and to match with the accelerating back-end payments. This shows the expected debt service, and it consists of two components, the current debt, which is this amount in the blue, which is based, as I said, on back-ending the payments. And this is the green, we're under, in order to replace the scrubbers, which are inside the chimneys at Nezwick, and that's our projection of what that debt service will be. Very expensive. Basically, in sum, we've got a funding approach that is viable to the year 2006. Of note, we, there was, when we were here last, there was a lot of discussion about whether we should extend this contract, revise it, many different options. Under the leadership of John Murray and Don Johnson, we, the town of Acton spearheaded an effort to analyze this, and keeping, making sure that our friends in the Fincome were involved in advising us, we took a strong stand against that. It ended up being a very, the right decision, and as such, we did not extend. Right after that, the Inspector General came out and affirmed our analysis of it and said that it's a rotten contract, which we all knew. There are remaining risk factors. The retrofit costs are still not defined. The commercial revenues, based on a spot market, just like any commodity, it changes in prices. There could be a change in law. The cost of fuel, if the cost of fuel goes up, there's actually a positive cash flow to us because of, we sell off energy, so, but that is a variable. But at the moment, based upon our plan, we're able to keep the stickers priced the same, the tax subsidy the same, and we're planned out for the rest of the term of the contract. I recommend the article, have the Selectmen recommend the article.
Comments from the Finance Committee?
Excuse me. The Finance Committee also recommends this article, and we believe that congratulations should be noted for the town, both through this brokerage program led by Dick Howe and John Murray's efforts to hold this tax rate on a continuous basis. And the planning that's gone into this has also allowed the town to avoid the contract proposals that were made by Will Abraider-Fry. I believe if we had not had the fund balance developed, we may have intended to go with a longer-term bad contract. So congratulations to the town management.
Other comments from the town meeting members? Seeing nobody standing, we'll vote. All in favor of the motion as read under Article 15, say aye.
Aye.
Or say no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 16 has been passed by consent, as has Article 17, as has Article 18, as has Article 19. Article 20 was passed by consent. We're moving along quite quickly now, don't you think? Now you see the benefit of the consent calendar. Article 21 was passed by consent. Article 22 is the town operating budget. There was question whether that be put on by consent this year as well, but we've decided, the Selectmen smartly decided no, so we'll move to Article 22, the town operating budget. And the motion reads as follows. Mr. Hunter moves that the town budget for the period July 1, 1998, to June 30, 1999, in the amount of $12,964,237 be raised and appropriated in its entirety, except that $84,730 be transferred from the cemetery trust fund for cemetery use, and $14,392 be transferred from wetlands filing fees for use by the Natural Resources Department, and further, that the town manager be authorized to sell, trade, or dispose of vehicles being replaced, and to expend any proceeds received. As the motion, do I hear a second? Mr. Hunter.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm here to talk about numbers. A small number, 1.4% increase, but large dollars, more than $12.9 million. This is the municipal base budget, which I talked about in my overview at the beginning of the meeting. When I pointed out, and you've seen this slide before, when I pointed out that the base budget, a 1.4% increase this year, is everything brought forward from last year with the increases as a result of increased salary, increased expenses of operating the same things that we were doing last year. As I explained in the overview at the beginning, and I think you perhaps understand at this point, we then take, in this town meeting, and set out in separate warrant articles and under these various categories, some of which you've already heard and decided, the various things that we propose to do that are new. Now, those items that are passed next year will be folded into the base budget and come back as base budget items, so that you get to see each increment as it's put on. Now, in the budget that we have moving forward, the 1.4 increase base budget is essentially the money we're asking you to appropriate or to take from those other special funds that are mentioned in the motion, to continue the town business for next year, doing the same things...